The June 11th meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission will come to order. Let the minutes reflect that all members of the commission are present. Will you please rise and salute the flag of our country by pledging of allegiance to it? With me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Will the staff please introduce themselves?
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsey Amanda, Legal Counsel for Planning and Zoning.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Ben Moran, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Tim Moore, Engineering.
Mike Petty, Senior Project Manager.
LeVar Boujwa, Billing Official.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to say several items have been pulled from these agendas, and I'm going to mention what they are in case there's some, you know, since there's so many people out there waiting, and it might be the item that you're waiting on. So, in the zoning agenda, Item 7A and 7B, the two towers, have both been pulled. Item 8A has been pulled from the zoning agenda also. That's the Kraus LLC property on Dermani Road. And in the planning agenda, Dutch Town Meadows, 10A, has been pulled. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
I so -- wait.
Before you do that, you may want to go ahead and swear in our new Planning Commissioner.
I was waiting until after we did the minutes so that, because he can't vote on the minutes, so.
10-4.
So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, move. So, we have a new commissioner, Mr. Matthew Pryor, and we'd like to swear him in.
Mr. Pryor, please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Matthew Pryor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Constitution and laws of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
As a Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
For the Parish of Ascension.
For the Parish of Ascension.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well done.
The next item is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who has any comment on any item on our consent agenda? In that case, I'd like a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So, moved. All right. Our next item is Item 9A, Bertha Henderson property. Mr. Quitma.
Good evening. Clint Quitma, representing WJ Quitma Surveyors, asking for Planning Commission approval of the family partition of 4BA for the Bertha Henderson property.
Staff comment?
They are requesting a variance to eliminate the T turnaround requirement, and we're going to recommend denying that variance to eliminate it, but instead of a T, just because of the way the property is laid out, L and a properly sized L turnaround, be 30 by 30 square, basically 30 foot from the end of the road so that it has two legs.
Mr. Quitma.
Personally, I would rather not do two. If you look at the plat, it doesn't extend to the end, and it was created prior to this plat before you. And so, therefore, if we see that there is an L drive, and I don't know if in the future or whatever be the circumstance, but putting a L there is going to leave a space behind on the east side of the property. And so, I would just rather eliminate it at this point.
Moran?
Yes, sir.
The paving stops at the apartments.
The public road for Tammy, yes.
Yeah. And then, there's a gravel road that continues, and then there are two houses that it serves on the south side, one at the very end of the gravel road. But the public road is only the part that's paved?
Yeah, you can see it. It has a little, on the second apartments down there on the southern side of the road, it'll say end of public road. That's where it does end, and there's a sign right there.
So, when it says, when the staff says they recommend an L turnaround, add it to the end of Tammy Road, are they talking about the end of?
The private. All the way at the end down by 5A, but you can see it doesn't go all the way to the end of 4BA2.
Right.
And so, if we have any further division, which, you know, is plausible on a 1.9 way, and due to the fact that the servitude doesn't extend to the end, you know, we can always add it in the future, but to add it short of the end, I just didn't feel that was necessary at this juncture in time.
Well, the purpose of putting these T turnarounds or the L turnarounds in, or if a bus were to go down this road and have to turn around to give it a space to turn around, and the possibility of this becoming a public road is pretty decent?
Yeah.
All the way down? And I guess that's the fail, that's the reason that we request?
Yeah.
The L turnaround?
Due to our current road system and the lack of funding in our current road system, if they don't meet standards, they shouldn't be taken in as a public road. And therefore, I hope we, if it is, I understand the council has a right to do that, but it should be up to standards prior to. And if, you know, I don't feel on a family partition, the anticipation of a road becoming public is a reason, because that is an if scenario.
Another thing I was wondering, it was, you said that this, the servitude that goes all the way to the property and stops short at the end, that was existing?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering why it went all the way across the property?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, what would stop you from just taking it all the way to the end and then putting the L turnaround there to eliminate having that extra space?
You could. The only situation is if you notice that the 40-foot, some of that servitude is on the southern tracks as well.
And it all stops at the same spot?
And so, yeah. You know, I don't know how 5A would feel about that.
No, that's a good point. I mean, it does, it stops at the same spot.
A question of staff. When we require a turnaround, is that required on paper, or do we actually require the construction of the turnaround?
Well, for now, for something like this, we just, we require it on paper, and that would reserve it. If the road were ever to be taken in, we have this space reserved so that there is ample room.
So, it's like a servitude then?
It's a servitude of access.
So, no initial cost other than the revision of the drawing, right?
Right. If they were to divide this property again and have to, they could, with that division, they could move it to wherever would be more convenient with another division having taken place.
Okay.
At this point, I'd like to open a public hearing. Are there any cards on this item?
No.
So, I'd like to close the public hearing. All right. Any more discussion here? Do we have a motion? Any more comments?
Since it's only reserving the need for a turnaround, I would move that we approve based on an L turnaround being reserved.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of feel like we have that in place for a reason. It's there to reserve it. Yeah, I would kind of have to agree with you on that.
Are you seconding in this motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. In saying that.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
And that was a 30 by 30 as recommended by the planner?
Excuse me?
He gave dimensions, but we didn't do dimensions in the motion.
Okay.
But he did say 30 by 30. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Is that correct?
Yeah, 30 by 30 and 30 foot from where the road ends so that it has two legs. Two legs?
Wait, we'll say L.
Wait, what do you mean two legs?
Yeah, he wants it, he understands what he wants. He wants it to go straight north.
Okay.
And then, extended past that 30 feet so that you drive in and then you back out.
Yes, I got you. L going the opposite direction.
Correct. Yeah, that was my motion.
That's the one I said.
Okay. All right. So, we both understa-- all right, thank you. The next item is Janet B. Alexander property. Mr. Quitma, again.
Yes, this is family partition on Alexander Road. Subdivision of A2A into the A2A1, A2, A3, and A4.
Staff comment?
Yeah, another turnaround comment. In the code, it's required at the dead ends that the turnarounds be within a 110 by 40-foot right-of-way, and he's provided one on here, but 60 by 30. With the 110 by 40 for a 50-foot right-of-way street, it's fine, but when it sees 30-foot access servitudes, I know that's overkill to be 110 by 40, but we aren't comfortable with less than 90 by 30, and it's drawn 60 by 30. So, we recommend that it be moved to 90 feet. Now, we're talking about a T turnaround or an L turnaround?
T this time.
That is the full T. Clint, y'all are asking for a T turnaround? I thought this one was an L as well.
Yeah, I had it as an L. I'm just unsure why you need Ts, but, you know, if you recommend it, that's fine. I mean, turn around on an L, you turn around on a T, either way. I don't agree with him in the first place, but whatever y'all suggest.
I'm going to open a public hearing. Is there any comment from the audience on this? Any cards? None, so I'll close the public hearing. More staff discussion?
The letter requested a variance of the T turnaround, but the staff recommendations on our cover sheet didn't say, didn't address it?
I saw that in the hardship letter. It was asking for a variance on it, but on the plat, it doesn't say anything about a variance, and a T is drawn in and labeled T turnaround.
That was my confusion. I thought, that's why I thought it was an L.
So, does this, you're saying you don't, you wouldn't recommend this as it's drawn?
Right. It's drawn 60. We'd like it 90. The back end of it running north-south along the back property line is showing a 60 feet. But the 60 would suffice if it were an L.
The drawing's not, they're asking for a T.
Mr. Quitma, you have any comments, any further comments about that? The dimensions of what you've shown in your drawing?
Again, as they stated with the 50-foot, but, you know, I'm sure if you want it, we'll get the client to put it on there.
Okay.
I just thought part of the 60 would be, would include the 30-foot that's already part of the servitude, the entry, the passage servitude.
That little doodle was for the last plat showing how the L would be imaginary lined onto the plat.
Reverse.
We're saying that if we're going to provide a T turnaround, which is what Quinn started to do, we think that that 90 feet provides room for a car to pull in, to back completely out, and then pull back in and stay within the servitude. As it starts to shrink, you start to reduce the ability of a car to make that kind of a movement. The thing on his plat says T turnaround, 30-foot private servitude of passage, Iggy Lane. We just want the T turnaround to be 90 feet wide at the end instead of 60.
But in the letter, they're asking for a variance of the T turnaround to?
The letter and the plat don't match.
Right.
So, our recommendation is to deny the variance for the T turnaround as requested in the letter, to provide a T turnaround partially as he started it on the plat, but to increase the dimension so it meets closer to the standard that we require.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend this based upon changing that 60-foot dimension to 90 feet. Is that the only change that we need to make?
Did we have a public?
And that we approve it?
Yeah.
Yeah, did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So, move.
Thank you. You all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. The next item is 9C George Shake Snyder property.
Ellen Jackson with McLean &amp; Associates, representing the Shake Snyder property for Louis Stafford, asking for your approval for this family partition.
Staff comment?
The only comment is that her T turnaround is 110 by 40, and she could reduce it to 90 by 30.
I agree.
You're saying she can be smaller if she wants to?
Yeah, because she's over the standard.
And she's at this meeting. You want to go smaller?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, do we have to open it up for?
Oh, we do. Do you have any comments on this family partition? You do? Do we have a card?
Yes.
Please come.
Dawn Gronkowski.
Please state your name so that we can hear.
My name is Dawn Gronowski, and I live at 45551 North Highway 936. I'm right across from the property that's asking for this request. And I've been there, raised three children, and I have been there for 20 years, 25 years actually, and we have 20 acres and a brick house, okay? I am, I think that the council should deny the request because there's not enough road frontage, and also, it would increase traffic. Also, in 2010, this property was previously divided, so I don't know why he wants to continue to divide and divide.
It was divided when?
2010.
Oops, sorry, ma'am.
So?
And we'd like to continue the rural atmosphere and not have this turned into a trailer park or something to that nature. We really don't know exactly what they plan to do in the future.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Would you like to say anything else?
I think that's all. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other comments? Leonard Gronowski?
My name is Leonard Gronowski. That's my wife that just does such an admirable job of explaining what our problem is. But what we are concerned about is that in 2010, his land was divided, Mr. Stafford's land was divided into seven pieces. This was not known to us, and we assume it was done because it all met your planning and zoning requirements. But now, he's asking to take two more, or another piece of the land at the same seven pieces and break it up into more multiple pieces. I haven't seen the map, so I don't know how many pieces he wants to break it up into, but me and my neighbors are concerned about what the future intent is. Is it being broken up to be a mobile home park, a subdivision? And regardless of what the intent is, it's going to create an atmosphere that's not a rural atmosphere. The area is zoned rural, and it's not going to create a rural atmosphere of having all of these subdivision pieces in that area. We'd like to, we'd like to request that you reject this request on the basis that it would become a lot more congested and as not intended for the rural area.
Mr. Grons, you live right across the highway from that, right?
Yeah, right across the blacktop.
Now, there are six lots on the map here. Are there houses on those lots, or are they just vacant right now?
No, they just moved one trailer onto one of those lots within the last month, and it is not permitted yet, because I could see that the, none of the power is hooked up, none of the sanitary sewers are hooked up or anything else, but it's the first one that was set out there. He does own two other mobile homes on the property that are further back along Bayou.
Yes.
I think you could see what our concern is.
Anything further?
No, sir, I think they covered, I think this.
I do, well, everyone that wants to speak needs to fill out a card before they speak.
Right.
And so, I do see a lady in the back that keeps raising her hand. If you do want to speak, you can come, fill a card, okay? So, we'll call you as the cards come up. All right, next card, please.
Our Bertha lot.
Before we get started, I have a technical point. About 13, 14 days ago, whoever owned the property came up and put a sign, posted it, that it was going to be a public hearing, and it was going to change the way that property was going to be used. By the next day or two days later, rain came and knocked the sign down. A couple people saw the sign before it fell, and were lucky they called some neighbors and said, "We need to check into this." So, I don't know, the sign hadn't been up for eight days now. From the time that wind blew it down and the rain about over a week ago, in fact, eight days, and it's still not up when I passed today. So, there's no notification on that property. They're going to have a meeting tonight. I don't know if that's legal with you guys, if that's okay? Does that meet the legal standards for posting that there's going to be a meeting on this property? Does that meet the legal standards? You'll put a sign, throw it down the next day, and it's okay?
Lindsey, well, our legal counsel's here, so I'm going to let her answer the question for you.
Yeah, the requirement was meant that the sign was posted, so yes, I would say it does.
Could you repeat that?
Yes, if the sign was posted in accordance with the ordinance.
Yeah, but it stayed up like a day, a day and a half. So, if nobody gets to see the sign, that's still okay, just so they take a picture of it and send it to you. To heck with the public.
So, does the public get other notice besides the sign?
Correct. It's in the newspaper, published as our agenda, posted on our website. We post the sign. Our agenda's posted here at the courthouse, and we have public notification. We don't have the manpower to go out to every site every day to ensure that signs are still posted. We just don't. We can't. Vandals could knock down every sign every week, and basically, we'd never have a public hearing, ever.
So, the law doesn't address that?
No, sir.
Just so you got a picture showing you put it up, and it's okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, same as the last two speakers. I don't know what this property is going to be used for. The rumors are all over the community that they're going to put up a trailer park, and the property has some problems. It's a flood zone. The last rain event we had on the west side of the property next to where they're going to, I guess they're going to build, they got some dirt up there, the water was three or four feet deep. And the only way we can get out of that property, that's got to come across 936, and it goes through a cupboard about 24 inches in size. So, the water stays a long time and gets pretty deep in there. And as it builds that land up, when he puts those levees he built to put the trailers on, there's already one trailer out there, it pushes the water on the neighbors, and it makes the water deeper for the people that live next door, because the water used to spread out all over the property.
Excuse me, sir, we have a three-minute limit, and we have, you know, so many people to speak, so thank you.
One more thing.
Well, I want to stay, I want to--
What'd you get, three minutes?
Yes, sir. And actually, they didn't start the time or too much after you started speaking.
Next time I pay my taxes, I'll cut it by three-quarters, okay? Fine.
Next speaker, please.
Brandon Boquet.
Good evening. My name's Brandon Boquet, and my wife and I just recently purchased a land that's pretty much diagonal across from this property that we're speaking of. We're the neighbors, Shake Snyder's. And it just so happened that the day I was cutting the grass on this property, I just so happened to see the sign, and everybody came running out to tell me. We're fixing to build a pretty expensive home on this piece of property, and our fear is that our property value is going to plummet once these trailers start to appear and this property starts to get divided. From the looks of it, the way it is now, the intentions are to put six trailers across the frontage, because I believe that's what's legal. Apparently, this 80-foot, you're supposed to have a road front of savage. So, it already looks like that's going to be in the case. Also, from what I understand, Mr. Stafford owns numerous rental properties throughout the area, and it's pretty apparent that this is what this is going to become. Personally, I don't want to build a very expensive house next to this, nor do I want to be around, excuse me, for the type of people who live in them. I'm sure you can understand my concern. I just, I don't, I don't want it, and I'd love to build a beautiful house in San Antonio and stay there the rest of my life without having to live next to it. So, I would reject this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next speaker, please.
Gordon Lesh.
I need 25 minutes.
We've got three.
In three days.
Talk fast.
I heard the same thing our neighbors heard. It's going to be a trailer park. While I can understand they're going to petition it to their children and give them lots and keep on going, and they got a loophole in the law that they're going to do it legally and they're going to flood us out. That man right there talking about the flood, that's my pasture, my ditch that it goes through. It floods everything I own back there. I've got 11 acres, and eight of it's flooded. My son-in-law's here. On this last flood we had, two weeks ago, five feet from going into his house, it was on a front step, 1-inch. Something got to be done before we can do anything else and get permits to build on it, dig ditches, put roads in it, which is going to put more water on us. The water where I live it, it runs north. It's supposed to run east on that man's property, but it don't run east. My old man, my daddy, had to put two ditches through the pasture to drain his, because everything on the canals that was supposed to be open and stay open, they shut them down. They filled them up with dirt and trash and garbage and everything else. It don't flood. One of them is the heat canal, and they got one behind it called the Neely Canal. Both of them dumped in the frostwater. So, they coming to me to get in Pertry Canal to get the frostwater. I still got water on my property right now. Something has to be done. Somebody got to stop something somewhere. I don't know how y'all going to do it, but somebody got to make some decisions on this stuff. And we don't need a subdivision with trailers on it. We got four in the neighborhood right now. I look at the Thursday paper when it comes in, and look at the section part on it, the resume. I don't know how this parish can keep up with the people being arrested, from 30 to 60 people every week, and we know what we're going to get if they do this, what they want to do, because they got that loophole in the law. We're going to be out of luck. So, what I did, I went to my new representative in District 81, Clay Shake Snyder. We getting together with the Department of Natural Resources and Army Corps of Engineers. Something that's going to be done, and if I got to go up to the higher in the state or to the federal government, I'm going to do it. We got to stop it, folks. They flooding out. My property ain't worth nothing. I'm the one that's taking all the water. Everything is running north. Sorry about that, but I get excited sometimes about that. My property ain't worth nothing. I mean nothing, because it stays flooded. Y'all need to do something. This thing don't need to go. That don't need to go. Them people got a place they living in right now. They don't need another place to live in, and we know what it's going to turn out to be. I'm going to have to buy me a pistol, surveillance, cameras, and everything else to stay protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
Gentlemen, good evening, ladies, neighbors. I am the gentleman who lives on the west side of Mr. Stafford's property. It runs a whole parallel on the west side. Mr. Gordon Lesh mentioned about the water. It is a fact. I keep a survey, I guess, on old pump shed up in the front. I moved to the back, do the fact. I had neighbors created some problems. The way I was raised, you know, I look at my neighbors before I do anything. But what we're seeing is the gentleman stated all the facts, gentleman about his house. I moved to the back, so I can get away from some problems that we had. The water does flood. Mr. Stafford did build the land up with a plateau, and I looked at the plat that y'all had here. It is accurate, but what he don't show you is the dirt that was moved out of a pit that was dug in the back, moved to this land, and of course, like the gentleman said, a red flag went up when a trailer moved into the area on this land. And this land is built up four to five feet. It has pushed water on my land. Now, I was consented before this happened, but like a do-stribe man, I believe can do certain things with his land, but keep your neighbor in mind. In my situation, it was never discussed. I have cut ditches to drain water off my neighbor's land. That's the type person I am. But this gentleman here, I've been living on this property 21 years, the water has come up due to the fact, the alteration of that land has been changed with the drainage of that water. That is a fact. I can take you to my property, I can show you markings on old pump shed, and it has came up. Mr. Gordon, does get flooded. It has increased. There's so many things, I always look at the character of a man. Is he looking out to his neighbors? What I can tell you about Mr. Stafford? No. I've had problems in the past in which a man has tore up my land, and I had to take legal actions to, you know, try to recompense something. I'm like this young man said, he's wanting to have family. I had planned on putting partition in my land and maybe granting this over to my grandchildren. Now, no. I'm thinking about selling. But the problem is, what is the value of my land after this happens? We do have people there now in rent trailers, and it has created a problem. I can write you a book of the situations I've had. I handle things myself, I do it in a law-abiding manner with the police officers I've had handling things before in the past. I don't want to come here and say, "I believe a man's got to have a place. I believe you can do certain things with your land, but keep your neighbors in mind." What I can see, no. This man is not a neighbor. This man lives elsewhere. Do I respect the man? Yes, I do, but I want to know his intentions. And what you guys do, I want you to deny this man of this partition, because you see what I'm talking about on this plat. It doesn't make sense. I understand we want to give it to his children, but the thing about when you move a trailer in, red flags go up. That's probably what I would say. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Sue Heath.
I'm also one of the neighbors, Sue Heath. I live at 9230 West Highway 936. And I live on property that was homesteaded by my great-grandfather. And there was a significant amount of property there, homesteaded. And we've had, we've passed that through as many as five generations. We have nice homes, we have lots of acres, we maintain them well, as do our neighbors. We want this to stay residential and stay rural. We don't want a trailer park, nor do we want a subdivision there. This is a beautiful area. We want to keep it that way. And if there's not zoning to avoid this, then there should be. As you drive from Highway 61, turn off on 22 and drive to 936, you pass trailers that are rusted out, should be burned if they're not already half-burned down, houses that aren't lived in that are falling apart, trash all over the place. Oh, and there's a bar there, and has been there for a long time. So they stop on their way from work, they turn on 936, they've had a few too many, and they can't make the turn. How many times have you replaced your fence? And we don't need any more of that. We have some problems in the neighborhood, we're trying to take care of those. We don't need more. Please reject this.
Ellen Heath.
I think she said it all, so I'm not going to say it anymore, she's my daughter.
Yes, ma'am.
I have questions for Mr. Stafford. I have one more question.
Well-
I'm sorry, about three minutes, right?
And it'll be real quick. I just want to ask each of you a question, and I'd like for each of you to answer yes or no.
We're not going to do that.
And the question is-
We're not going to do that right now.
How would you like to have a trailer park next to you if you're in a rural area and own 20 or more acres?
Thank you. But that, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't think you would answer.
Rebecca Gilery.
This young man in the blue, he did a really good job of talking about that sign, which I know it's, it was up for a day, and it came down. And supposedly, we get recognition, or we get told that we have this meeting to come to. Y'all have, or somebody has the previous owners. Now, my husband and I bought this house two years ago. We did not get a certified letter. The mail came, they would not release it to us because it wasn't actually addressed to us. It was addressed to owners from two and a half years ago. So that's a little bit of a hiccup here in the system, how we're supposed to be notified that we can come to these meetings. The sign fell down within one day. But my main issue, that has nothing really to do with what I'm concerned about, is that when my husband and I bought the place, we bought it with the intentions of living in a very rural area, and this is going to, we're afraid that that's about to be taken away from us. We're also worried about, we bought a 50-year-old house, knowing we were going to be dumping a lot of money into it. We're halfway through our renovations and our construction, and now where is our property value going to go from here? Another thing that we are concerned about is two children that we have on the way, and how, and first of all, our land butts up to this. So everybody else is speaking about land that's across or diagonal, we are next to it. So this backyard, one of these plots is in my backyard, or it butts up to it, so I can see it. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the crime that would come with people who would be coming into these trailers. And like everybody else noted, I don't know exactly what's going on. It's just kind of hearsay. Is it going to be a subdivision? Is it going to be a trailer park? What exactly is going on? I'd love to have, like, answers to that. And I think that's about it. I think everybody else said, did a good job, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next. That's all. This last staff, like to make any other comments?
I think that the first thing we'd like to say is that the plat as presented would need a bit of a revision if it's going to move forward tonight, because the code says we cannot have a private road connect to another private road. So as it's drawn, they have L. Stafford Lane running into G. Shakesnider Road. The lots would have to be reconfigured such that 5B is also on G. Shakesnider Road. You can't have another private access servitude in this mix. So 5B could move to the top of 5A, or 5B could move to the other side of G. Shakesnider Road. You cannot have another private servitude in there, in this kind of a division of property. As far as the comments that were made, I think that the argument that one of the gentlemen made about a loophole, I think this is a clear example of that loophole. The lots up front that were created in 2010 were created through the simple division process. Those lots were legally created. They meet the criteria for the creation of individual lots. He's now using the family partition process to create more lots that don't front on a public road. The argument could be made, why can't those children live on one of those lots that was already created? That's the intent of a family partition, is to put your children on property close to you. He still owns those front lots, clearly. Those children could be placed on those lots and put whatever they want on them. If the intent really is to build a rental community out there, then yes, that is using the family partition as a loophole to take advantage of that. And I think personally, until those lots are filled up with units, you shouldn't be creating more lots through that process.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. That's it.
Question, Ricky. This area is zoned rural, is that correct?
Right. That's right.
Ricky?
Sure.
Okay. Now, if someone were to try to develop a subdivision in an area zoned rural, how big would the lots have to be?
You could develop a 50-foot-wide lot subdivision in rural.
In rural?
Right. The zoning of the property dictates the density. So if you have 100 acres at two units per acre, you could have 200 lots.
Okay.
They could be down to 50 feet wide, but on that size of a piece of property, you'd be using less of the land.
Yeah.
In this area, you're going to get hit with our new fill ordinance, where you can't fill a piece of property more than 36 inches.
Right.
And it's going to become much more difficult and much more expensive to develop a subdivision when it requires six to eight feet of fill, just to build the roads. So, you know, we reduce the lot size across all zoning categories with the idea that the number of units doesn't change, because it's two units per acre. The size of the units doesn't really matter. You're still going to build houses on them. You're not going to build a subdivision and put in manufactured housing. So you can build 50-foot wide lots in rural.
Yeah. And then another question. If theoretically, you could do subsequent family partitions and circumvent the whole idea of the subdivision regulations, is that correct?
Correct. The way the code is written, someone could family partition their property forever. You could create 1,000 lots through the family partition process, never doing sewage, traffic, or drainage.
Right.
And if they've got that many offspring, that much in-line people, kids, grandkids, parents and grandparents, that they can continue donating property, then yes.
Or even transferring property to a partner and having them do family partitions as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Ricky. What you said about the plat as it is, it does not meet the requirements for a family partition as it's, as this plat is that we've been given in front of us?
Correct. And, you know, it was something that, once again, Mike just caught as we were sitting here, listening to everyone talk. If it was going to be approved, we would make the recommendation that it's approved contingent on L. Stafford Lane going away, and the plat depicting 5B located off of G. Shakesnider Road. That would be our-
That's a big contingency.
The reason I ask that question, and I'm trying to get up to speed on the family partition thing, but I'm looking at the ordinance, and it requires the planning commission to review the proposed hardship family partition meeting requirements, meeting the requirements of this section to ensure that the criteria are present within the definition of a family partition. And from what I hear to you, that this plat that we have in front of us does not meet the requirements.
Well, generally speaking, the hardship is you cannot create lots that front on a public road to donate to your family. And so generally, they create a private servitude of access for those lots to front on. We're simply stating, there's already a named road. There's not an existing access servitude. They're creating a new private servitude of access, but it's named. And so what we're saying is, that named road is private. You can't have another private road intersect with that. You have to do your family partition all off of the same private road. So the hardship for a family partition is, you don't have enough frontage to create more lots. And so I don't want to say that because this map is drawn incorrectly, it should be denied, because if we were in a different part of the parish, we would simply make the recommendation to revise the map so that 5B fronts on G. Shakesnider Road and not this new road. I don't want to say that that was a reason to deny it or make them come back, because if they come back next month, we're just going to be wasting their time, because I believe that our recommendation would be the same, that until you fill up those front lots, you don't have really a hardship. You have a place for your kids.
One of the issues that was brought up, as we've heard yet again, drainage was designed by God, I guess, to go one direction, but man has interceded and now it's going in a completely different direction.
Correct.
How do we address that prior to it coming here? Can we get drainage to go out there and look at what it, what really is?
On individual lots of record, we're always going to default back to it being a civil matter. If this person has created a situation that is pushing water onto a neighbor that hasn't pushed there before, that's an issue between property owners. If there's an existing drainage servitude that's not cleaned out, or that there's a culvert that's blocked, that's when we get involved. But for individual lots of record, you were really talking about a slippery slope if we're going to start doing drainage plans for individual lots.
There's not enough data collected to do that adequately. But is that the case here? Is there a servitude? It sounded like somebody said that one of these bayous were blocked off at one point, whether it was 10 years ago, too.
We don't get into that with family partitions.
But I thought you said if a drainage servitude was obstructed-
That would be for a property owner to go talk to the drainage department.
Okay. Not through us?
No.
Through the parish at the drainage? Okay.
Ricky, this Lot 5, before it's split into 5A and 5B, is just about one acre, just over one acre apparently, right? What could be done on Lot 5 now?
Lot 5 is about 70 acres.
No, well, I mean, I'm talking about 5A and 5, so 5A and 5B are part of a much larger Lot 5.
Yes, sir. You see 5C back in the back, 68.893.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. Okay, I get that now.
Oh, it's all, now I see. I didn't even see that.
So if you look back in 2010, they created Lot 1, which is on the left of the 80-foot transcontinental gas pipeline.
Right.
2, 3, and 4 front on 936, 6, 7, and 8 front on 936, and Lot 5 kept 100-foot of frontage to access to the back.
Mm-hmm.
And so now they're dividing Lot 5 into 5A, B, and C, with A and B accessed off of a new private servitude, so you can't do that.
So they've got 68 acres to go.
Oh, yes.
Ricky, we've talked before about Gonzales doesn't allow family partitions of any kind, and we have what many in the parish consider a sacred right to have family partitions. Is there some way to address something in the middle, or do we have to go one way or the other?
As long as we're going to continue to allow property to be divided on a substandard roadway, there is no middle. It is what it is. You're going to create lots that don't front on public roads. I would argue that family partitions are but a drop in the bucket compared to what major subdivisions are, because we'll approve family partitions from January through December that do not equal the total number of lots in one of the subdivisions you guys have approved in the last four months. Just, it's a drop in the bucket. I'm going to tell you, we can't address drainage on family partitions. We just can't. As long as we're subdividing roads on substandard roadways, you're going to have people that try to take advantage of that process.
So as the head of planning, what would your recommendation be as it pertains to family petitions? What should we look at?
I would look at anything. Right now, I don't think it's a big enough problem. We have enough issues with our major subdivisions that I think, you know, we're going to see some, a recommendation come from drainage here in the next month. We're going to talk about it in the staff report, how to address the drainage in major subdivisions. To me, that's a much bigger fix than trying to say, hey, these 30 lots that we created this year in family partitions are really a burden on the parish. I think the fill ordinance that we passed may, we may look at that over the next year or two years to say, hey, 36 inches is too tall, let's go ahead and lower that down, let's increase the requirements for how do you compensate that fill brought into flood zones. But literally, since that ordinance passed 90 days ago, we've done one. We've had one house try to build on more than 36 inches of fill. So that's not as big as a problem as we thought it was either, or people are choosing other lots to build on.
We have someone that I don't know if he's spoken before, but continually raising his hand.[1713.97] We have someone that I don't know if he's spoken before, but continually raising his hand. Would some, while the public hearing is still open, would you like to say something?
I'm the guy...
Yep.
I'm the gentleman who's building the house, who's having to adhere to this 36-inch fill line, which is causing me a significant amount of money. Which I'm, I don't agree with it because I do think it's too high, but that's the law. That's what we're dealing with, and I'm going to pay it because that's where I want to build my house. I, you know, I just, I don't want to see what's going to happen to that property turn into that way. Because the early way he's got it built up, the water's going crazy and it's obvious, you know, it's going to keep happening if we don't stop it. That's all.
Ricky, guys, this, 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 I'm assuming this whole area is in a floodplain?
Yes.
And so what happened with him moving this dirt from the back to the front and building up this property? Did this just fall under the Corps' radar and no one paid attention?
I'm going to default to my favorite fellow, Joe Santamal. We don't regulate...
That's right.
Fill in the parish on somebody who's got a piece of property, wants to dig a pond and move some dirt around. We do not regulate it. We don't require a fill permit. We don't require a dig permit. We don't require a clear your site permit. We don't. But Joe Santamal could do whatever he wants with his property. So this guy chose to dig a pond and move that earth to the front of his property.
But the Corps does regulate that. FEMA does regulate that. I mean, he should get permits to move this dirt around.
If it's in a wetland.
Yeah, if it's in a wetland, but it may not be.
But what about when it's in a floodplain, too?
Not necessarily.
I thought when it was in a floodplain that they had to go through a permitting process to make sure that the fills, that failsafe that we've talked about with that 36 inches, that, I guess I'm kind of missing on how it goes together, but...
If he's doing that all on his own property, someone...
Could...
With an engineering degree is going to draw a drawing that says, I'm removing 4,000 cubic feet here and I'm going to put it here. I'm all within the same basin. It all balances, blah, blah, blah. But now are you pushing water that didn't use to go somewhere, somewhere else? And right now, that becomes a civil matter because we don't regulate it.
Yeah, that's when, that's when the courts come into play and, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to, two more speakers and I'm going to close the public hearing.
I heard all what y'all had to say, but I think the main thing is please don't destroy our community because somebody got greed in their heart, period.
I just have two Shekstenider comments that I'd like to make real quick. One of them is you have to understand that Shekstenider Road is a dirt road that the two current mobile home people that live out there now use as a drag strip every week, every weekend. The other Shekstenider comment I have is I've been in conversation with Kent Shekstenider, our consulman, several times on the same issue. Couple of weeks ago, he was inundated with problems for flooding and so forth. Recently, I've talked to him. He told me he's at a drainage meeting this morning, or this afternoon, or he would be here, and he is against, and he told me I could use his name and I could tell you that he's against subdividing this property, and he is our consulman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to close the public hearing now. Do we have more discussion?
I mean, I feel like, is it as simple as our task is just narrowing down to determining whether or not we feel that there's a hardship in place enough to step outside the bounds and allow the subdivision?
Maybe our legal advisor could help us. I mean, could we determine that if we don't consider this a hardship?
Right.
We could reject the family, request for family partition?
A hardship has to be demonstrated. It has to exist, and you have to believe that there is hardship.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I was, yeah, that's what I was asking.
I'd like to ask Ricky this. Is there anything in the, in the documents we were providing, provided for this demonstrating the hardship?
Yes, I mean...
What?
There's a letter, but generally speaking, let's just imagine in a future world that those six lots had trailers on them already. Okay, so they've, they've done that simple division. They put those trailers out there. That's rental property and its income. And this person, this property owner comes to us and wants to do a family partition. There is a genuine hardship because he cannot create any more lots that front on a public road. Therefore, he needs to create lots that front on the private road. I'm just telling you, you can't have a private road hit a private road. So you just got to rearrange the lot so they're both off of the same road, either top to bottom or front to front. So yes, there is a hardship. He can't create any more lots that front on a public road.
Right.
Is there, is there...
But there can be.
Lindsay, is there a legal definition of a hardship set forth in the, in the code of ordinances?
Yes, but what Ricky's saying in practice is the public fronting on a, not having the frontage on a public road has been considered a hardship. And he's saying, based on what we've decided in the past, that's a hardship.
Ricky, there is a nice, long definition in the back of the code for a hardship. There's seven, seven standards for a hardship. The family partition itself is a hardship. It's...
Is there some, is there some, something on each of these already subdivided lots?
There's only one thing on lot number eight, and it's not connected to anything yet. We drove out there and looked at it today. It doesn't even have a culvert out to the highway yet, so the only way to get to it is go across the cattle guard and go through a barbed wire fence. I mean, it's been placed out there, but I don't know that there's plans yet to hook it up. There's, there's no electricity. There's no, it didn't look like a MODAD was hooked up, but there's...
There's nothing on two, three, four, six, or seven?
Or one.
Or one.
Ricky, if, if... If a, an individual does a family partition and uses the lots, but it's not his family in the lots anymore, then does, can, he create another hardship because his family's no longer in front and he's created the hardship by using this for some other use?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because of the law?
Those lots in the front weren't created through the family partition process. Those were created through the simple division process.
Oh, okay.
So he hasn't used up his family partition ticket? Well, Ricky, I'm also noticing that 5A and 5B are 107, 157, 146 foot wide. So what you're saying is that if he were to have to front both 5A and 5B on Shekstenider Road, he would have to knock that lot down to 75 foot or so, give or take, wide each on a private road. Is that...
No, no. He could move 5B to the top of 5A, or he could move 5B across Shekstenider Road and just front. They could just be on both sides that way.
But with the lady that's representing, Mrs. Stafford, like to say something?
Well...
Do you have anything to say more?
Huh?
I was just asking if you wanted to add to that.
According to his recommendation, it is possible I can move the lots, either put them on top of each other or on the other side, and that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's just a tough spot. That, it conforms to everything that we have in place with the code. It's a tough spot, but we have discretion.
Lindsay, I'm going to put you on a spot a little bit. Is there any legal reason, legal reason to deny this?
Not that I'm aware of. We don't know what he's going to do with this property. We can't say that he's not going to build homes or trailers, and we, we can't speculate as to what he's going to do with it. We just see what's in front of us on the plat.
Excuse me. It just, we, I just need to keep order in the meeting, and so we can't be, you know, yelling at us from the audience. I understand.
Ricky, you made a statement...
Commitment that you all have. You've got 12 commitments that you wanted as your mission statement, and the first three...
Excuse me.
The first three, one of them says, we will manage growth, and that's you. You're going to manage the growth. What it says is you're going to, there's going to preserve the rural character of the parish is number three. Are you doing that?
This conforms to what we have in the Land Development Code.
Question for staff, Ricky. You made a statement in reference to the two private roads that button one another. Repeat that again, please?
The code is pretty specific in that you cannot have a private road hit another private road. It becomes, it comes down to an emergency situation that the ambulance is trying to find a private road that's off another private road. And generally, now you've got two substandard roads. You're expecting an emergency carrier to find somebody. So it was just missed in the original review, and so that's why we're making that comment tonight, is the plat can be fixed so that it's not an issue. We just can't approve it as it's shown here because we wouldn't allow our chairman to sign that plat.
It could be prolonged.
That being said, there is the problem we have there. As proposed, there is the problem.
So... So we, can we deny it as proposed?
As proposed.
We can deny it.
Based on what staff just gave us.
Look, we're going to...
We could deny it one month, but we'd be kicking it...
We're going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to deny this, but it's going to just push the problem down the road because they're going to come back with, with a re-divided. So I'll make a motion that because this does not conform with our requirements for a family partition, that we deny this request.
I have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you all for saving our time for a while, anyway.
Might prolong it. It might be prolonged.
Now, how do we make sure we get the actual certified letter since supposedly we're not...
So after a meeting, you can meet with the staff here, give them your correct address, and you'll get a letter in the mail.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So...
I wasn't expecting that one.
10A has been pulled. 11A has been pulled. 11B has been pulled.
Wait, 10A has been pulled?
11C, Dutchtown Gardens Spud. Is this home? Oh, okay. Can we please keep the chatter down so that we can hear?
Do you want to give them a minute to clear out or...
It doesn't look like they're leaving.
Mickey Robertson with MR Engineering and Surveying, here tonight to speak about a revision to the...
Okay.
Yeah, you might as well wait, Mickey.
But the whole trade thing, that's a rumor.
But there's nothing, so... Well, I think that that covers it. The hardship evidence is that they don't have adequate frontage.
Or sell that one piece.
And he hasn't used his, he hasn't used his family partition card yet. No, but actually, actually Ricky suggested that I use that between a buddy of mine trying to buy four acres on a private road, all the woods off the terrace. Let his daddy subdivide it via family partition since you can't subdivide it.
If you check the website, it'll be on the website for the meeting.
Very big loophole.
Are all ashore going ashore? That are going ashore? All right.
You good?
Yes.
Once again, Mickey Robertson with MR Engineering and Surveying, here tonight to speak about a revision to the Dutchtown Gardens Spud. It's an existing subdivision adjacent to the high school on Highway 73. What we're trying to get accomplished is we're trying to get an O'Reilly Auto Parts store put on track day here. And in order to facilitate a left turn in, we had to make some revisions to the median in Dutchtown Gardens Avenue.
Excuse me. Can, can, can you please bring the private conversations outside the room so that we can hear? We're having a hard time here because of the hearing because of the chatter. Sorry. That's okay.
Mickey, can you put that up where we can, where you can indicate specifically what you're talking about because it's going to be, you know...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the mic. I thought maybe you couldn't hear that.
On the projector.
Does that work?
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay. The, one of the things that we're trying to get accomplished is we're trying to get an O'Reilly Auto Parts on this track day.
Track day being the one up in the front?
The one in front, right here. Yes, sir.
Okay.
On 73. The median out in Dutchtown Gardens Avenue is actually a piece of common property that belongs to the Spud. We need to shorten that median about 10 feet to accommodate a left turn into the site. That's one reason we had to make a revision to the Spud. The other revision is so that we can have a rear access drive behind the O'Reillys that comes out on Harriman Road. Harriman Road is on, it's half on this tract and it's half on the high school's property. And currently, the high school uses it as their access. They have a right end, then they have a left out and a right out. All we're trying to get accomplished is an access along the backside of the O'Reilly store, out onto that driveway for deliveries that typically occur late at night. And that's really, that's the gist of what we're trying to get accomplished. The only way to do that was to go back and revise the Spud. That was originally approved in 2008. And that's what we're here tonight to ask for those two revisions.
Staff recommendation?
I'm going to read straight off the report. It says, "Due to the unique configuration of the site and the applicant's desire to build a strip commercial center facing Highway 73 rather than Dutchtown Gardens entry driveway, and the lack of an objection from the Ascension Parish School Board, staff recommends approval to the requested changes to the Dutchtown Gardens Spud."
Okay.
So it has been, it has been put up before the school board since it affects some of their property?
Yes, sir. They have met with the school board on multiple occasions, and I have had phone conversations with Chad Lynch with the planning department at the school board.
Okay. I'd like to open a public hearing on this matter. Are there any speakers that signed up? In that case, I'm closing.
I'd like to hear, you know, I'd like to hear from Chad.
Okay. All right.
He, he looks like he's enthusiastic to be heard from.
No, we, it hasn't been presented to the board itself. Superintendent reviewed it with our attorney. And it's kind of a historical situation. When we built the school, DOTD had us put the road over the center. And that's, that's the nature of our non-objection is that, you know, when we built the school, they didn't allow us to put a driveway on our side of the property. I look back at the documents. They, they wanted it to line up across the street, so it was probably a planning concept to line up the driveway with that, where we were putting our drive and the subdivision across, across the street. So, you know, looking back at the records, that was, that's what was put into play in 2001, something like that. So that's why we, we don't object. We've seen the map, superintendent and I, the attorney, we've seen the map, but we didn't get a chance to show it to the school board. So, I mean, the board itself hadn't seen it, but the superintendent and I spoke to her before I came here tonight.
Do you have any concerns about it, Chad?
The only concern I'd mentioned to Mr. Robertson when we talked was right now that, that front portion of the driveway that their trucks would use, the school board built it. So maintenance would be a concern. You know, I hope to not have, you know, if we start to have problems with the road in the front part right there after the trucks start using it, that we'd be able to work together with them to fix it, you know? And we discussed that. We don't have a formal agreement, but that's the only concern I have. Now we'll have two parties using that front piece of the road, not one. We have a situation like that in Donaldsonville where we don't get cooperation from the adjacent landowners, so that's the only concern.
And then there is no servitude on Harriman Road anymore? Or that's...
I mean, it...
Is it private?
If you look at the history of documents, I couldn't say for sure.
Okay. I mean, I just, we can all have a gentleman's agreement at this point that, that you can allow this and you can allow that. But 20 years from now, when there's different personnel in the school system and maybe this, this auto parts store becomes another type store, that they're not going to know what agreement we're talking about.
Right.
And so if it were formalized, I'd feel a whole lot better about that. And I'm not sure how to do that or whether we could even require that as part of this, this process, but...
And we have no problem formally dedicating a servitude there. It actually benefits both of us. Because we're going to be going across their property, they're going across ours.
Yeah. And would that, would that include agreement that both parties would maintain, would share in the maintenance of the road?
Yes.
Okay. So how would that come about? I mean, separate procedures in this?
Very similar to the document that revoked the servitude, whatever it was, seven or eight years ago. We just have another document prepared that would rededicate the servitude. We'd show it on the map so that it'd be formally on the map as well, and that agreement would consist of a maintenance portion also.
Okay. And one other question from...
And you're committing to that on, on the record?
Yes, on the record.
Come on to the podium, please.
My name is Scott Russell. I'm with Kimball Development. We own the property. We're the one developing it. I have two teenagers at Dutchtown High School.
Right.
If you really look at what's going on, it's not going to be a problem because 30 to 40 school buses drive over the same driveway every single day. An 18-wheeler is going to drive across this driveway once a week at 2:00 in the morning. Maintenance is not going to be an issue. If we wanted to do it proportionately, based on how many times a school bus is going to go over, they cover 99% of it, we cover 1%, but we're not going to do that. We're happy to sign a gentleman's agreement, however legally it needs to be done, that says, we will cover this portion of the, the maintenance as well as the school will cover that part of the maintenance. You know, when we found out that the driveway was 20 feet on our lot, we, we could have definitely played hardball and said, we're going to use the driveway. But we didn't do that. We met with, with your committee. We met with the school. We wanted to partner with them to make sure that everybody is happy with what we're going to do with the property.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing at this point. Do we have any other discussion here, Mr. Burgess?
I was just going to move for approval.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
All right, staff report?
Mr. Chair, before we go to staff report... On the last issue, we kicked it down the street.
For 30 days.
It's coming back next month.
Yeah.
So Ricky and Lindsay, what are, what are our choices in something like this? None?
The law, I mean, the family partition law is the law that you guys have to work with.
with. If the council wants to change it or they wanna close the loophole, that's their decision, but very limited in what you can deny in that situation.
You know, the thing that has bothered me since we began discussing this a few months ago was that loophole, that what we, all the good work we tried to do as a commission could be undone through sleight of hand, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I heard.
And I really don't like that. You know, if we have to stick our necks out, if we think something's wrong, we have to stick our necks out and just deny it and get sued or whatever, but, you know, we, we need to stand up for what, why we're here and what we're supposed to be doing as a commission.
Although according to Ricky, and I believe him, it's just these family partitions are really a drop in the bucket and I would hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater while, you know, a lot of people really do...
But that's what I wanted to speak on when Gasper was talking too. Even though it's a drop in the bucket, it directly affects several people in that community that's gonna be heavily influenced.
To them, right. And most of the family requests are legitimate.
Right.
You know, in my idea of a family partition, daddy lives on the property, he's got four children, wants each of the children to live there, so he divided and they live there. That's my conception of what a family partition is, but under the law, it can be, nobody lives there, it's divided and each of these people can take that, they can divide it among their grandchildren. You could do that over three, four generations and take a 50-acre property and divide it into 300 lots without following any of our guidelines.
Although some, some people's estates may only be their piece of land. They have no cash and they think that the value of that property will rise later, they set it at a later time rather than now. So instead of selling it, even though they all live in different states, they divide their one piece of treasure between their children now by doing this. This, this is, this is how they divide their estate.
But why two half-acre lots and leave 68 half acres?
I'm not talking about this instant.
It's very suspect.
Right.
But I'm just saying, generally.
You know, if we think it's wrong, we deny it and we let them challenge it.
Because we have principles to follow. I mean, we've got, you know, that's part of the game.
We have laws to follow too, though.
What overrides what with us?
But we have principles to follow and in this regard, we're supposing that what all those people said is accurate.
That's right.
And a lot of it is rumor.
Nothing stops someone from...
We don't know what they plan to do with this piece of land.
I guess my concern is, even though it's a drop in a bucket, family partitions have been an issue since we've been here.
Study and make a recommendation to the council if that's a, if that's a serious issue.
It used to be simple division that was a problem and that went away and now it just pushed it off to family partitions.
It didn't go away. We proved through the ordinance that there was no mechanism to do what they were doing. What they were doing was called simple division with a variance. So what you would see on your agenda is you'd see a whole block of them for family partitions, you'd see a whole block for simple divisions with a variance. And so what they were doing was a developer would go out and buy a tract of land, do a private servitude and then subdivide off of that and it was a simple division with a variance. And the variance was, well, we don't front on a public road. And we said, "No, family partition is the only mechanism to divide off of a substandard road." So we eliminated simple division with a variance. Those were a problem. Simple divisions still exist and to me, that is a problem because our zoning ordinance is too loose. Our zoning map says that we should have too much density all over this entire parish and until you change the zoning map, simple divisions are gonna continue to occur all over the place because if a piece of property has enough frontage, they're gonna continue to chop those lots out, which the code says you can do it. You can keep chopping, keep chopping. The loophole with family partitions is the creation of lot on substandard roads. If you wanna close the loophole, you stop that, but I agree with Maury, you're gonna have, you're gonna affect a lot of people when you tell them you can't divide your property amongst family members, you can't do it because there are legitimate family partitions out there. I bought a lot that was a family partition. When you go back and look at the history of where my property is, it's now 29 lots through the simple division and family partition and simple division with a variance process.
That's exactly what's going on here.
That's it.
Why don't you move out and then we can change this? Well, my concern is, not this particular case, but we're about to have an explosion in this parish and there will be people who will use this device to create stuff that have absolutely no regulation. So whether it's the simple division, the family partition, even though it's small numbers, it can affect big stuff. So I would ask that we get a recommendation of what, what would be reasonable to do to protect property rights and at the same time, get rid of this stuff if it's possible.
Do you guys remember we saw this off of Germany Road where this guy had children that were, you know, high rolled, two years old and the same thing happened until the children were grown and could put a house there? We're gonna go ahead and put whatever trailer we want and rent them out and that's what they had, I think five or six trailers. Same exact situation that we have here. That's tough to...
You guys haven't been in your spots as long as I have, which hasn't been long, but long enough. Every time you try to address family partitions, we get killed. I'm just telling you, this is not gonna be fun, it's gonna be painful and it's gonna die at the council. That's what's gonna happen.
I don't think we're opposed to the concept of family partitions at all, but if we have reason to believe, good enough reason to believe, that there's something behind the family partition and we wanna take, stick our necks out and say, "No, we're not gonna allow this, let it be challenged."
I support you on that.
Slippery slope.
Yeah, I get that, but I mean, we're, we don't have these high-paying jobs for no reason.
I'd be more, I'd be more inclined to stick my neck out, I think, than worry about the...
Right.
I move that we double our salaries.
Yeah, right.
I saw Lindsey saying something and I wasn't sure what it was. Oh, great legal counsel.
Well, I was just saying, I don't, I don't know what evidence you have. I mean, the people who come in here, they even said this is hearsay. This is hearsay, this is rumor, this is what we've heard and, and you all are hearing that testimony and sort of uneasy about approving it based on what they're saying, but again, you know, we have to go, we have to go with what's in the application and what they stated in their letter.
Lindsey, we denied this one tonight because it wasn't, it wasn't in accordance with our requirement.
Right, but they'll be back.
Yeah, I get that.
And that's my concern is next month, what do we do?
It kinda puts staff in a bad place because they review it and suggest revisions and this was something that was just caught tonight. So you can see that the applicant might have a, you know, might be worried about it and come back in 30 days and made the, you know, made the suggested changes.
Maybe three family partitions or four.
It was, it was denied because of where Lot 5B was.
Right.
Right.
All they've gotta do is move it and then...
That's as easy to fix as the T-turnarounds that we were talking about.
Right, it'll be back next month if they want to.
It's that simple of a fix.
Well, have them fix it.
We just bought ourselves 30 days and I just wanted to bring up the question.
60, they won't, they missed the July deadline. It'll be August.
But they're coming back. I mean...
I'm glad you sparked the conversation because this is a tough one.
Yeah, it's always gonna come up.
I would like to request any commissioners who have any ideas on how to address these issues to email us or come see us and we'll be happy to document that and bring it back for another staff report and discussion here. I think that we've got some ideas, but by no means are they gonna fix every problem everywhere, every, and I'm telling you, this is gonna be painful.
Could we simply redefine hardship? Which would satisfy the people who do legitimate family partitions, but stop the people who are...
Could you have a residency requirement?
Yeah, I don't think you can. I think that the value of the property can be a gift to the child without, you can't require that they live on the property.
Why can't you require that for family partition?
Because that's, it might be a person's estate that they wanna divide between their children and that's the way they have to do it. If they don't wanna sell it at a low price right now, wanna wait to do it later, they need to divide the property.
With a partnership, they don't have to divide the property.
I understand. I'm just saying from a, I understand the value equation, but from a zoning and planning, there are other ways. I mean, property gets divided all the time. I mean, through airship or whatever.
We don't regulate the ownership of the property. Once we've, once you've approved the plot of sign, we don't regulate, we don't enforce who lives there, we don't check the clerk of court.
Yeah, my question was, can you? Can you make the family petition requirement that somebody has, a relative has to live on a property for some period of time?
Like Maury said, if it's, it's part of an estate, say my father wants to leave 10 acres and split it between my sister and I and I take a job in Texas, well, is it fair to me to say, you know, you can't have somebody live on that property and you're keeping it up, you're paying the taxes? I mean, it's...
Well, I understand that, but we're letting them slide on regulations that other people have to follow. That's my...
That's, that's the beauty of the family partition. That's the gift from the council to the people of Ascension.
Okay. And that's, once again, my question is, should we, what do people in Gonzales that own property do with their children?
Yeah, they don't have a family partition mechanism.
They don't have that option.
I understand. So what do they do to address? If Maury owned 80 acres in Gonzales and he wanted to give it to heirs, what could he do? He could donate.
He doesn't have the frontage, they're not gonna let him.
Well, what if he wanted to give two kids 40 acres each? There is no mechanism in place in the city of Gonzales to subdivide his property?
There is division. It's just not a family partition. You can divide the property.
But what if you're not on a public road? Then Maury has to put a public road.
Ask your councilman to get a street built for you.
We're not taking new roads.
Follow through the process beyond the family partition process. If we were to approve a family partition and that, and for the purpose, and the purpose of that request in the first place was to develop the property, what's the next step? They have to, they have to get a permit to develop the property, right? Whatever that is. If it's building a home, putting on slab, putting slabs and trailers, whatever it is, they have to get a permit for that. There might have to be a drainage study. What is gonna, what's gonna prompt the requirement for a drainage study? It has to be, not for, not for something this small, it's not gonna be a drainage study.
No. The drainage would only come in if the lot was bigger than a half acre
Right.
and they were trying to put more than 36 inches of fill.
Okay.
Then we would require some sort of analysis to say, "How are you gonna balance all of this dirt?"
Right.
For individual lots, we don't require that. You know, the, the concept that I'm gonna throw out there for y'all to just chew on was creating a, a date by which we would say, "On this date," and so let's just say, for example, January 1, 2015, whatever the tracts are today in our GIS system, that is our parent tract data. And as of this date, those parent tracts, you know, are eligible for family partitions following the rules, but maybe you limit the number of lots that can be created, maybe you limit the number of times that a parent tract can be divided, maybe you limit, maybe you create some rules based on that parent tract date. We tried that in the past, failed miserably. The other thing we were saying is if that parent tract is owned by X, so this guy owns this piece of property, then that is the only person that's eligible to family partition that piece of property. So if co-heirs or some other thing happens, family partition for that tract of land is no longer possible. If that piece of land sells after that date, it's no longer possible to family partition it. That parent tract on that date is locked to that person forever for family partitions. And that name...
And it can lead to sons, daughters, grandparents.
Correct.
We could limit it that way too.
Well, it's already limited in a straight line. It's a... Right. Basically what we're saying is that name, so let's say it's Joe Santimal, can never appear on a second lot within that parent tract because what we see now is somebody will family partition Lot 1 into 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and on Lot 9, hey, Joe Santimal's name's there again. So then he comes back and he partitions 9 into the same people.
Right.
So make the, the parent tract, the name, the date, everything, tie it all to that and say, "Family partitions are for that, for that reason."
Is there a precedent set for that?
No, we just made it up.
Yeah, I like that. It's good, good idea.
Nightmare.
It's a nightmare. It is a nightmare.
Okay.
Thank you.
Staff report?
So we haven't done any more work on the privatizing of subdivisions. I don't know if you guys have any comments on that. I know that the bill is still awaiting the governor's signature and I think until the governor signs it, the council's not gonna take any action, but when the council takes action, we'll pick it back up and start moving forward with that again as far as privatizing subdivisions and then giving those subdivisions the option for how do you become public again? And that would be with by taxing, creating this tax district that would provide a millage for each of those lots to fund the maintenance of those streets within that newly created subdivision. And then at that point, it's now a public street subdivision again. Or they don't have to do that and it just stays private until you actually have voters and then they could vote whether or not to maintain their streets.
Now, would an ordinance like that have to be initiated by this body or...
It's my hope that when the bill is passed, the Transportation Committee or the council will send a resolution to this commission to send a recommendation to that body on how to address it. That's my hope. I don't wanna just take it on a whim and just send it to them and say, "Here's what we thought of." I want them to tell us, "We want y'all to address this issue."
Right. Because I wouldn't want to do that unless we had been given some direction from the council.
Correct.
Can you think further?
Sure. So at the drainage board meeting Monday night, Tuesday night, whenever it was, recently, last Monday, there was a lengthy discussion about the rain event that we had and Bill